All right, it is five forty-five P M and I'm welcoming you all to the regular meeting agenda for Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, I'm calling this meeting to order. At the roll call reflected, everyone is here safe, Mister Stewart. May I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Move to approve tonight's agenda for February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second, it's been moved by trustee Santos, seconded by trustee Mayor. Roll call vote, please.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Kendell?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Motion passes six zero. We have minutes tonight. Uh, they were sent to you electronically electronically prior to the meeting and then they're also printed for you. Does anyone want to make any amendments to the minutes for? January, what's the date on it? January thirtieth?
Three. Yes, um, I had came, uh, I did come in late, but I did attend the closed session meetings.
I wanted the ministry reflect that you arrived at five forty. I said it out loud at the meeting.
Okay, great.
Okay. Uh, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes. I make the motion to approve the minutes from January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Second, it's been moved by trustee Mayor, seconded by trustee Kendell. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Kendell?
Yes.
Santos? Epstein? Palm?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Motion passes five zero one with Santos abstaining. It's now time to move on to our closed session, seeing no one in our audience for public comment on closed session agenda items. I'm gonna close that item A under closed session and move to item B, where we adjourn the closed session to discuss conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, conference with labor negotiators, liability claims, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaint, and student discipline. We're going, we're closing to closed session. Thank you for coming tonight. Uh, we're gonna finish off our closed session by announcing a few, um, announcements on closed session and then we'll start our meeting. In closed session, the board approved a settlement in the amount of three thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty cents in regards to a claim for underpayment of wages filed by district employee Kendra Bowling. The roll call vote was as follows. Six eyes, zero no's, zero abstentions. In closed session, the board approved placing a custodian on suspension without pay pending a hearing. Hearing, the vote is as follows, five yeses, zero no's, and one recuse themselves. In closed session, the board took action to issue a notice of release, non-relection to a hundred and four temporary probationary teachers pursuant to education code section four four nine two nine point two one and four four nine five four B effective June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and directed the superintendent or his designate to send out appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was as follows, six eyes, zero no's, zero abstentions. Okay, so closed session is done. I'm Colleen Martin, I'm the new president of the board and I'm so happy to see you all here tonight. Um, we're gonna start with our flag salute. We have a nice young man here that Dr. Fossett will you please introduce for us, Joaquin?
So thank you, President Martin, I'd like to invite Joaquin Dominguez, he's a fourth grader up to the mic and I'm gonna read a nice statement about him. So, Joaquin is one of the fourth grade students at Dorothea Lang Elementary and someone who embodies the ideals of Lang reflected in our three Bs, be respectful, be responsible, and be safe. He's respectful in every way he treats all members of the school community. He's kind to his peers and staff members and will frequently ask to check, check in with each person and see how they're doing. He is always one of the first students who help in class, whether it's to support a classmate or a staff member. He's responsible in the works and works hard and tries his best to grow and be the best student in the classroom. He takes pride in his work, which he extends beyond academics. He also is incredibly creative and artistic. Not only does he demonstrate physical safety through, throughout the school day, his level of respect and responsibility also plays a key role in developing an emotionally safe school campus and an emotionally safe learning environment. We're proud to have him up here representing our school today. Joaquin, the mic is yours.
Please stand. Raise your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
All right. Well done, Joaquin, we're so proud of you and it looks like your principal is awfully proud of you too. Items of interest from the board under communications, anyone like to share anything this week?
Ms. Van, I just wanted to wish everyone Happy New Year to Moonnamely, which is the lunar calendar, uh, year and it's the year of the dragon. Anyone else, I skipped the students, but don't worry, we're gonna get to you, don't worry. Ms. Santos? Done? It's on the minute you talk, okay. I just, I missed last time and so I just want to, uh, take a shout out to our facilities people and thank them for the letter that they sent out to the residents in Grovel Beach that live around, uh, Grover Heights Elementary School. It's so important when somebody is doing work around your area to get information that there is gonna be work and loud noises and stuff. So shout out to Andy Stenson and his crew, uh, it really is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Stenson. Ms. Kendell?
Thank you.
All right, well, I just wanted to top on, uh, I, Ms. Van's remarks about the Lunar New Year. I went and celebrated up in slope for the New Year celebration, it was, uh, Cody was there, president of our LMUTA and it was a really fun experience, so it's lovely. Thanks for being here tonight. Okay, student representatives to the board, uh, first from AGHS, Kayla Sessena.
Good evening, um, I hope you guys had a wonderful winter break and stayed warm and dry since I last saw you all. AGHS has been solely building back momentum after our time off. Um, so tonight I'm gonna start with our leadership program. Uh, last week, our link crew class worked on celebrating our counselors. Our leadership kids decorated every counselor's door with personal notes from kids from the school. It's always amazing getting to celebrate our counselors because they do so much for us. Our AIM class just delivered seven hundred and seventy-four pre-CSF membership invites and these go out to tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade students who earned a three point five or higher GPA um, for the first semester. And this week, ASB is hosting our Spread the Love Week. Each day consists of a different dress-up day, a lunchtime activity, and at the end of the week, a rally. Today, we dressed up for our favorite team, so kids wore jerseys. Wednesday is Show Your Love For Yourself and kids will wear red and pink. Thursday is Show Love For Your Teachers and kids will be dressing like their favorite teacher. And lastly, on Friday, kids will be wearing their class colors to show their love for their class. Not only is the whole week filled with amazing activities, our annual staff versus staff basketball game is on Friday. So please feel free to stop by the gym at lunch to watch our amazing teachers fight for the bragging rights for this year's basketball championship. Next, I'd like to share you, um, share with you updates on our clubs and programs. First off, starting with Eagle Robotics, they've been working extremely hard for their upcoming competition. Their first one, um, they'll be traveling to Ventura for, to showcase their talents and then three weeks later, um, they'll be traveling to Las Vegas at the Thomas and Mack Center to also compete. Our mock trial team has been competing and is competing in the semis tonight as we speak in San Luis Obispo. While this is a young team, they're having a spectacular season. Our FFA program hosted last week, a public speaking contest for local high school FFA programs. AGHS won the creed contest with Dali Settle taking first out of fifty-eight speakers. Our FNL chapter will be hosting their second blood drive next week on Thursday. And lastly, our band boosters are hosting the Spring Fling Dance on the twenty-first, twenty-fourth, sorry, excuse me, twenty-fourth at the Thousand Hills Ranch, the theme is denim and diamonds. Now onto academics. E T E tours have been going on for the last few weeks for freshmen and sophomores. This has allowed them to see what pathways our school offers while visiting the classrooms. Avid Ten just got back from taking an overnight trip to a handful of San Diego colleges as well as USC. And our counseling department hosted a Cash for College Night a few weeks ago and the attendance was very strong. Many families and seniors appreciated receiving assistance assistance in filling out that FAFSA. And the next scheduled Cash for College Night is next Tuesday. Now in the arts, AGHS Theater recently concluded the run of Evening of One X, which included three thirty-minute mini productions that showcased many different genres of theater, including murder mystery and comedy. Our Grin and Bear Improv troupe teamed up last week with Nipomo High School Improv, um, the Nipomo High School Improv, thank you N H S for hosting this event. Lastly, in the arts, we are also excited to announce that our theater programs, um, Silent Sky Play has, was choose, chosen to participate in the International Despian Festival in Indiana this summer. They were one of nine schools nationwide that are lucky enough to perform. Now onto athletics. As our winter athletics come to a close, we are going to announce our team standings and games that they still have yet to play. Um, starting off with girls varsity basketball, they ended second in league and they have a home game tomorrow and hopefully will continue to move further into C I F. Next, we have our boys varsity basketball, they play second in league and they are, league and they are on the road today and play Clovis East. Girls varsity soccer placed fourth in league and they play tonight at the Doug Hitchens Stadium against Ridgeview. Our boys varsity soccer played, placed fifth in league and the boys will be on the road tomorrow against South. Last but not least, both boys and girls wrestling, they were, they just competed in C I F and have four wrestlers that are continuing on the masters level. And lastly, we'd reckon, we wanna recognize the athletes that are signing. David Ramirez signed to the Ohio for gymnastics. Ephraim Now is signing to the Skyhawks for football and lastly, Presley Dunkle is signing to Cal Poly for soccer. We are very excited to see our, for our Eagles and wish them the best in their athletic future. And finally, last month, AGHS, at AGHS, we lost one of our dearest Eagles, Mister Jeff Byers. Our Eagle family has been working to create a lasting memory for him and will keep you informed of our progress. Thank you so much for your time and I'll see you next, or next month, sorry.
And now from Nipomo High, Savannah Willing.
Good evening, everybody. I trust you all had a good holiday season and Happy New Year. I don't have a lot to report out tonight, so we're gonna start with prior to our Titans embarking on winter break last month. We had our annual winter holiday spirit week. This spirit week featured themed dress-up days, such as wearing your favorite holiday hat and pajama day. And we had organized activities like ornament making, cookie decorating, hot chocolate, and different gatherings on the quad. Now that our Titans have returned back to campus, we have been diligently planning various engaging activities. On February third, we successfully hosted our winter formal dance at Thousand Hills Ranch with the enchanting theme Tangled Up at Winter Formal, inspired by the Disney movie Tangled. Proceeding the dance, we conducted a spirit week and a rally and we proudly showcased our winter sports teams. Looking ahead, our ASB class is currently brainstorming upcoming events, including prom, March Madness, senior weekend, more like that. Our FFA program has been exceptionally active. They recently organized their annual outdoor movie night on Ag Island, featuring the Sandlot with an impressive turnout. Additionally, our students participated in the M F E and A L A conference and they attended C S U Chico this past weekend, uh, achieving notable placements in various categories such as Florida culture, livestock, milk quality and dairy products, B I G, and such as. Uh, for their February community service initiative, they're collecting cereal boxes and students who bring in two boxes are entitled to send a candygram tomorrow for Valentine's Day. And the candygrams were made by our floral classes. Next week marks National FFA Week with lunchtime activities on the quad and themed dress-up days. Currently, our link crew class is diligently assembling candygrams for Valentine's Day tomorrow. They just hosted their candygram making on the quad today, so they can pass them out for tomorrow. Uh, they're also actively engaged in ongoing efforts to recognize outstanding students and staff for the Student and Staff of the Month program. Uh, last week, our basketball team celebrated their senior nights honoring numerous seniors and commemorating their athletic achievements. We also celebrated our boys and girls wrestlers and both of our soccer teams. As we move forward in the school year, I look forward to all the upcoming events that we're putting together. Thank you guys for your continued support and I'll see you all next month.
Thank you. Okay, Katie Euro from Central Coast New Tech High.
Hello, everyone, it's been nearly two months since I've seen you all, so I hope you had a wonderful winter break and are looking forward to the rest of the school year. In the past two months, our ASB students have been hard at work. We held our annual winter formal on January twenty-seventh at Blacklight Country Club, which had the theme Winter Ball. Our next large event will be our Spring Fling Spirit Week, Spring Feast, and Dance. Our dance on March fifteenth kicks off our spirit week and our feast being on Monday, the twenty-second. The theme of the week is in the works, so please stay tuned. We will also be celebrating a mathematical holiday, Pi Day, on March fourteenth, where students can compete for a pie of their choice by memorizing and reciting the most digits of pi. We are also currently working on a few fundraisers. Our ASB class combined with Dior Lights, our student-run candle-making business, to create special Valentine's candles and candygrams for our student body to purchase. We are also currently planning our tri-tip fundraiser, which will be on March seventh. Next, for some of our community events. Our link crew has been doing an amazing job during the season of recruitment and parent information nights. They've been visiting middle schools and talking with students and parents about our school. Now on to academics. Our ninth graders are planning a hypothetical road trip across the country and learning about the rules of the road in their safe driving unit on a research and communications class. Our tenth graders are collaborating with Dior Lights to find the perfect formula for soaps, body butters, and salt scrubs, so they can be sold as Dior Lights' new products. To compete, to complete this project, students will have to demonstrate their knowledge of molecular bonding, stochiometry, polarity, the periodic table, and many other chemistry topics. Juniors will be holding our annual commodity night on March fourteenth. We invite you all to come and compete for a fifty-dollar Jaco's gift card by showing off your knowledge of global trade routes and economics. Lastly, our seniors held Poetry Out Loud Night on January thirty-first. The entire event was directed by our seniors and we had a very large turnout. Now on to athletics, band and theater. Over winter break, myself along with two other all-American cheerleaders from Nipomo High School traveled to London to represent the United States in their annual New Year's parade. I am honored to be chosen for this opportunity and excited that I got to represent New Tech across the pond. Additionally, many of our students from New Tech are in the Nipomo High School band, which have done an amazing job performing at Nipomo basketball games this season. Our esports team is also continuing to excel, which opens up the opportunity for participants to win large scholarships. As always, I would like to thank my leadership advisors and thank you so much for listening.
All right. Lastly, Aubrey from our alternative ed.
Good evening, board and attendees, Happy New Year. It's hard to believe it's already February. This New Year is off to a great start at Lopez and P V A. But first, I wanna mention a couple notable events from December. Right before winter break, Women Aid, a community organization which supports Lopez, provided a variety of new items so we could host a holiday mart for our students to make gifts or select gifts that they would like to give to their family members. At P V A, during the bi-weekly social club, students made gifts for friends and family members. Onto two thousand twenty-four, we've started off this year, this new year with some well-deserved recognition. Lopez students, Alana Flores and Katie Nessamir were awarded Elk Students of the Month in January. On January twenty-sixth, Lopez and P V A students participated in the informative LMUSD Career Conference at Nipomo High School. The chief coordinator was Heidi Rowe, the Career Center Technician serving Lopez and our other district high schools. The conference provided students a wonderful chance to hear from the professionals in the community about what careers are available to our students when they graduate. Piper Adelman, a community volunteer, Patty Wiley, and our librarian Teresa Campbell created an amazing corner library at Pacific View Academy to be used by students of all ages. Books are mostly donated by Women Aid, who are always looking for our, out for our alternative ed programs. Last weekend, Lopez took a group of students to Los Angeles to visit the Getty Museum, eat at Felipe's, and watch the L A Kings play the Edmonton Oilers. This trip is particularly fun because some Lopez students have never spent time visiting large cities. In a few weeks, Lopez will be hosting a soccer tournament with a few other continuation high schools. Delta High School in Santa Maria is committed to attending. Maples in Longoke and Paloma Creek in Tascador are hoping to make it too. At Lopez, we held another spirit date in early February. This time, students and staff wore pajamas to school. Next week, we will be hosting a community day with a winter theme. This will be the first team-building event for our newly enrolled students to enjoy. We'll have a fried chicken meal from Food Services, field activities like a fake snowball toss, and simulated team skiing along with cookie decorating. Finally, P V A and Lopez would like to thank the facilities and team of the grounds, uh, facility team and the grounds team for all the recent work they've done on our sites, including the benches and sitting area to honor Jolie Martin, our former assistant principal. They've also updated our garden beds, improved the parking lots by providing speed bumps for safety, quickly cleaned our sites after the storms, and we'll be installing pickleball courts for our P E programs to utilize. We really appreciate all these improvements to our campus. That's it for Lopez and P V A, thank you for supporting.
Thank you, Aubrey. Well, thank you to all your students, we love hearing the things that are going on your campus, especially the little touches like, I didn't know about a bench for Jolie Martin and I'm really happy to hear about that, I love memorial benches, so. Thank you very much, um, for all you do on your campuses. Okay, gonna move it to superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, President Martin, I'll keep mine short this evening. Um, it is TK enrollment season, I'm happy to report that our TK numbers that we're anticipating are up and it's only been open for a short two weeks. Uh, you might have noticed on K S B Y, we had a couple stars in the district, um, that were talking about our programs. We had, um, one of our TK teachers, Danielle Susick, um, who did a phenomenal job, um, talking with K S B Y. And we all said Shelby West, um, who's responsible for our early learning programs, and Lucie Amar, who's a tosa for us, who did a great job there as well too. Um, last night, I attended the South County Advisory Committee to, um, hear about a community update on, um, a large development that's coming in our area that will impact our schools. Um, and then, um, I wanna report too on a fun activity that Branch Elementary engaged in. Um, in celebration of Lunar New Year, um, the Cal Poly Lion Dance Team came onto campus. It was kind of a culminating event after they learned how to make paper lanterns and masks, um, and more on campus and it was a phenomenal event, they had drums and they had this, um, huge group of Cal Poly students who had, um, the, the lion, um, on top of them dancing around like you see traditionally. Um, it was just a great experience for them and a great way to kick off the New Year. Thanks.
Lovely, thank you. All right. We're gonna get on to the business of the meeting, but before we do, I do have some comments that I read prior to every meeting. A couple of announcements before we get started with the official meeting of the Board of Education, where the public is invited to observe and provide comments. If you would like to speak, there are speaker cards in the lobby, yellow and blue for if you wanna speak on a specific agenda item or on comments not on the agenda. Do we have an interpreter, Elsa, Ms. Hernandez? There you, oh, thank you. Introduce yourself, what's your name?
Aciela Diaz.
Aciela. Aciela is here if you need any, uh, Spanish interpreting. Thank you for being here. And on the last pages of our printed agenda, our decorum standards are stated. Thank you, um, also to our security team, who I do see showed up, thank you, awesome. Because Mister Stenson and, uh, Ms. Jacobs thought they were on the hook for tonight. Guidance about public comment. Public comments are an opportunity for members of the community to address the board trustees in the meeting of the school board that is open to the public. Members of the public are encouraged to address the board concerning any item on the agenda or any item of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Public comments are limited to at most three minutes and no more than twenty minutes total for one subject matter under the discretion of the presiding officer. The board will not take any action around discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except as authorized by the law. This is why the board does not respond during the public comment section on our agenda. It is important to recognize that opinions and comments shared here are those of the individual speakers and may not represent the views of our district, the board, or our staff. Lucie Amar is committed to fostering an inclusive, welcoming, and safe environment at our meetings and schools. We respect everyone's right to express their ideas and opinions. All remarks must remain free from personal attacks, particularly those based on legally protected categories such as race, religion, disability, and sexual orientation. Our district is dedicated to serving and nurturing all our students, guiding them to become responsible, ethical, and productive members of society. To honor this mission, please make sure your comments avoid profanity, demonstrate tolerance towards differing viewpoints, and exhibit exemplary conduct. Cause as you all know, our students are watching and learning from our every moment. Please be aware that any disturbance or intentional interruption of the meeting is not permissible. In accordance with recently enacted law, excessive disruption by any individual or group will result in the board president revoking the individual or group's privilege to address the board. Disruptive participants may be warned and, if necessary, removed from the meeting. We value your participation in the public meeting of the Board of Education and thank you for your cooperation in maintaining the efficiency, effectiveness, and civility of Lucie Amar. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the business before us, the business of the Board of Education. The first item is our consent calendar action items, items number one through ten. Would anyone like to pull an item? Seeing none. Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay, so I'm gonna open it up to the audience, does anyone have any comments or questions regarding one through ten? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public audience, uh, public comment from the audience and bring it back to the board for any comments on the consent calendar action items, one through ten. Seeing none, now I'll invite a motion. I make a motion that we approve items one through ten of the consent calendar. Second, been moved by Santos, seconded by trustee Mayor. Roll call vote, please.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier? Kendell?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Motion passes six zero. Okay, we're done, no, just kidding. Mister Finkel will be very unhappy about that. So number, we're gonna move on to reports and presentations, resolutions, proclamations. Uh, number eleven, school site presentation, Dorothea Lang Elementary School.
All right, it's my pleasure to invite up Principal Finkel. He's gonna give a presentation on professional learning community's approach and the ongoing efforts of positive behavioral interventions and supports at Dorothea Lang.
I'm gonna have a couple people join me in a, in a second, because it's not just me that's, uh, leading the ship there or, or, uh, supporting the students. It's, uh, a bigger team that's here tonight. I want, do I have the?
Just hit the arrow key.
Oh, there you go. All right, so we wanted to tou- touch on just a few things that highlight our mission, which is to ensure a student-centered education that will inspire and prepare all learners in a safe environment. I'm gonna talk, just coincidentally, we're doing kindness week there at Lang, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about that. We'll talk about our behavior, uh, Positive Behavior Intervention and Support System, or P B I S, as well as then also how we're kind of tackling as a school team, um, our work into the professional learning community with Walk to Learn. Just a, a, a brief snapshot on kindness week, got to hold a couple of two, uh, fun assemblies with first our TK, um, through third and then our fourth through sixth to talk about kindness and the effects that kindness has on a community. Um, each day of this week, we're gonna be wearing, uh, doing some sort of dress-up day. Today was, um, wear bright colors, this was not what I was wearing, I changed before coming here, but as a student told me, the, the one bright sweatshirt I had wasn't that bright. We all just try our best. We, each, each student got a kindness checklist, but specific activities that they could do to be, uh, additionally kind this week. Tomorrow, we're all gonna be wearing red, pink, and purple and share words of kindness, both in class and also decorating the campus with, um, some of those words with chalk. On Thursday, we're gonna be wearing our On Thursday, we're gonna be wearing our sports gear and each class is gonna be doing one kind of shared kindness activity or what we call a kindness challenge together. And on Friday, we'll all wear our Bobcat gear and take a school-wide picture to really demonstrate us all being kind together. As I told students this morning, it's not just about being kind this week, we're just doing a little boost because it can strengthen a community and we expect that to carry on moving forward. Well, that I'm gonna lead us into, forgot to put on here, but Andy Meansuber, our assistant principal, one day a week is gonna just give an overview on PBIS at Lang. It's great to have Andy there one day a week, especially since she was at Lang when PBIS kind of started about five years ago.
Hi. So this is our fifth year of implementation with positive behavior interventions and supports at Lang. We're working as a school site and have been working as a school site for the past five years on really having consistent expectations for student behavior regardless of setting or which staff is working with students. And we're also working on providing behavior-specific feedback to students. So it's not just good job, but it's I like how you are sitting, that's so respectful, connecting back to our three Bs. We've had the gold recognition for the last two years for our implementation and we're excited to continue on.
Continuing that, I think PBIS, our work there at Lang, which I'm just getting to come on to now, really primed us for some solid professional learning and collaboration because it's really all about working together to support students on the behavior side. We really have a strong tier one approach, which is proactive instruction for all students, so making it clear what those expectations are ahead of time, not just when anything's violated. Significant reinforcement and corrective feedback for all students. We have tier two additional levels of support, which is primarily through a check-in, check-out system where some of our students that need a little additional reminders on what those expectations are to check in with adults and have positive interactions, as well as maybe get some corrective feedback throughout the day. And then exciting for Lang, this year, we are one of the two schools in the district that's in the fifth year of implementation and really starting to learn on some strategies for tier three, supporting our students that need the highest level of support, which is primarily in the prevent, teach, and reinforce. And so we have a team at our school that's working with the county to learn how to implement that higher level of a multi-tiered system. On here you can see our school-wide expectations, which are posted everywhere. And then something that we've really added this year, kind of with this, we have one of the parts of a strong PBIS system is to have a way of communicating to students, both the positives and the negatives, and also have a uniform approach to communicating any referrals that need to be addressed. We've added, instead of just doing the negative referrals, which are primarily in our tier two system, to also do some positive referrals, which just kind of being able to share a highlight of my day as the principal, is being able to share those positive referrals with students and make those calls. Today I got the fortunate opportunity to talk to one student about their positive referral and call their parent with them in the office and have them smiling from ear to ear. You, Ms. Madrid. And with that, we'll just bring it over to our professional learning communities and I'll introduce Samantha Lee, one of our TOSAs and intervention teachers.
Hello. So I am one of the co-TOSAs at Dorothea Lang Elementary School and we've been focusing on most of our professional development with the PLC process and Walk to Learn. So what that looks like, our late start Mondays are dedicated to development of the PLC process. We are focusing, professional learning focus is on meaningful collaboration. So through teacher survey and just collaborating with our staff on campus, we saw that it was a priority that they wanted to prioritize collaboration with their grade level and we thought what better way to utilize that time other than in professional development as we're learning as a staff together. And then common formative assessments. So we've spent a lot of time creating or using district-provided common formative assessments with pre and post-assessments for our students. And then data analysis, we've used different tools to support in our professional development to help our staff in taking those steps to analyze the data that they are given. We are using grade level agendas in our PD to reflect on our school and grade level norms, consistently review our school mission and vision statements. We use our agendas and meetings are centered around the four essential questions, which I think is the framework for a lot of the professional development that we do. Those questions are, what do we want all students to know and be able to do? How will we know if they learn it? How will we respond when some students do not learn? And how will we extend the learning for students who already are proficient? So really looking at our school as a whole and making sure that we're addressing all the needs of each and every one of our students. So that leads us into the Walk to Learn process. So we are currently in our third cycle of Walk to Learn and we're definitely walking through the process and learning as we go, as we're going through the PLC process as a school, as a staff, and as a district. Our targeted intervention of enrichment of math skills are linked to grade level standards. So we are focusing on math as a school site and looking at the needs of each student by grade level. So teachers are pulling students two days a week within their grade level and they're doing a Walk to Learn-based learning on their individual needs measured by pre-assessments. So we are in the professional development, creating those pre-assessments, analyzing that data, looking at those proficiency scales, and then teachers are collaborating and having that discussion of who's going to be teaching what, how can we support you, how can we work as a team? These are all of our students, let's work together on this. So it's really great to see them collaborating and coming together and just taking a closer step as working more as a team. And then after the four weeks, we are looking at student growth and measuring with post-assessment data and we're currently looking at progress monitoring, formative assessments to continually assess the students as they are going through the Walk to Learn cycle. Thank you.
I think one thing that I really like about the Walk to Learn model, or that I'm sure the staff does as well, it's a really good format to initially dive in with PLC to support our students, but it's also kind of our format on how we're learning as a team and teachers. And one thing that we realized early on is that in order to give us some framework on how we can support our students through the Walk to Learn model, besides just using those four questions, is to come up with some collective commitments. And so our collective commitments that we're really honing in on through professional learning on Monday mornings and in our practice is to, one, determine an area of need that we think needs to be addressed that's connected to one of our essential standards. I think the district did the work in kind of identifying those essential standards, now worth looking at, what skills do they need to have to reach those standards? Then developing and administering a common informative assessment to collect pre and post data so we could see where all our students are at. Analyzing that data to develop a plan and what that looks like in action for Walk to Learn is, two days a week, all third grade students are kind of split up based on their need and then they go to the classes that they need that will either give them the necessary intervention or enrichment. And finally, in the piece that we plan to look forward to in the future as we continue this, is analyze the effectiveness of instruction through comparison of pre and post-assessment data. So not just looking at, you know, student learning is essential here, but also how is that reflective in our teaching? And I just want to end this by giving a couple of our teachers an opportunity to share what's the impact on learning and teaching and I'll introduce Marissa Johansson, one of our first grade teachers, to share first.
And then teach you just alone?
Yes. And branch for one year and holding an AG. Yes. So I'm just gonna share really quickly what the teacher experience is in being part of the PLC, the professional learning community at Lang. It gives us a unified goal that we're all working towards, whether we're with our grade level team or with our larger staff. And those four critical questions that Samantha explained of PLC are always at the forefront of our minds during our collaboration time and they really ground us in all of our discussions. The critical questions also ensure that we are using data to drive all of our instruction and to help meet the needs of all of our students, which is always our ultimate goal. And so overall, the teacher experience with becoming a PLC at Lang has been really positive and we're really excited as a staff to continue working towards ensuring our student success. Thanks.
As well, Andres Cavasa is one of our fifth grade teachers.
All right, hello. Thank you for your time. I started working in Lucie Amar a really long time ago and if I count right, it was about 17 years. And at that time, as a new teacher, I remember, I remember hearing PLC and I remember we had some half, we had some minimum days, some half-day planning meetings with our grade level and what we were doing is we were making common assessments. We were basically, we were pretty much doing what Lang is doing right now, but there are so many differences that we're doing now in a much more positive way than when I first started. One of the, one of the great things about like the PLC has been, everything has been built into our late start Mondays. I think everyone in the room can probably attest to time is precious in our field. And so having something new rolling out to Lang as we started PLC work last year, it was so nice as a teacher to have that built into our late start Mondays. And not only has the PLC process been good just for grade levels, but it's been great to be part of your whole staff. And there has been some great conversations that have happened when we are collaborating and starting to get some vertical alignment. So not, at the very beginning when I was doing this, I was only with the sixth grade teachers, but now I'm in a room with all the staff members and we can easily go and ask third grade a question, we can ask sixth grade a question, and it's just so much different. So much different now than what we were doing then. I think for me, looking at data and being part of these professional learning communities is that it makes me a better teacher. I know that when we're deep into this Walk to Learn and as teachers, we're teaching either students that are above grade level or at grade level or below grade level, is that the team that I work with, we are constantly rotating ourselves so we're not fixed in like with one single group and it constantly keeps us on our toes. Another great thing is that, is seeing the students and their desire to learn. Sometimes when we're not on a Walk to Learn cycle, we have, I know I've experienced students before that said, hey, when's our next cycle? When's our next Walk to Learn cycle? And, and that's just a great, just a great thing to hear. And I think when you hear students kind of asking, asking for something like that, I think you're doing the right thing.
All right. Thank you, Ling team.
Thank you, Tom.
For joining us as well. Thank you, Dr. Fossa and the Board and Cabinet for having us. We appreciate it and share some of the great things that are happening at Lang.
Well, thank you. Did the board, this is a report only, did the board have any questions or comments? I have comments. Ms. Mayor? Well, you answered my questions as you kept talking. So I love the fact that you're focusing on math because big need. I was gonna ask how you were setting your standards, but you answered that with the late start Mondays, working together. What kind of successes have you seen? Are you seeing a lot of movement between the Walk to Learn groups and what's happening with that?
Yeah, I certainly don't have any other specifics in my head, but yeah, after each time, we definitely see a good amount of growth within and we plan to kind of look at in the future. It's also helping us identify what skills we want to target through this, whether it is, this is more of a tier one or tier two approach, or if we identify there are so many students that need the support, maybe it's also better served in the classroom through tier.
Anyone else? Ms. Pam?
In your PLC, what you, have you designated a certain time during the week that the children that are needing more specialized help or if they're but way above, you know, are they moving in a certain, you know, let's say third period or whatever period they go to where they've been assessed, you know, and where they need help or don't need help? Is there a particular timeframe in that week?
Yeah, we've built this into our master schedule, so we don't have the periods, but it's within the master schedule because what we don't want is, you know, to pull students out when they might be missing something else. So it's kind of a time where everyone's receiving what they need.
Okay, so you're not taking them out, but you're, everyone's participating?
Yeah, it's all, it's uniform within the grade level. Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I just wanted to say one comment. I love those grids, you know, with the expectations and I just laugh because I work at a high school and that one, keep your hands to yourself, it's just like TK to get to 12. I'm constantly, every day, I'm still saying, keep your hands to yourself, you know, you're not in kindergarten, keep your hands to yourself. So I appreciate it on yours, I appreciate it when I saw it in AGHS's, you know, it's just a core expectation at Lucie Amar, keep your hands to yourself, you know? But you guys sound like you have a wonderful team and I'm so excited that you have a group of staff that are excited about the positive improvements you're making at Dorothea Lang. It's awesome. Congratulations. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number 12, report. Meet your local control and accountability plan, LCAP update, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, President Martin. It is that time of year again when it's time to talk about the local control and accountability plan and it is my pleasure to take you through our report this evening. So as you may know, Senate Bill 114, which was passed last year, added a requirement for all local educational agencies to present a report on the annual update on the LCAP and budget overview for parents on or before February 28th at each regular, at irregular scheduling board meeting. And that report, which you will hear tonight, needs to have all available mid-year outcome data relative to metrics we've identified in the LCAP and all expenditure and implementation data on all actions that we've identified in the LCAP. And as this is our meeting in February, this is our chance to review that report. So the first thing that we wanted to review is the impact to the budget overview for parents. You may recall that the budget overview for parents is the very first part of the LCAP. It has some charts that describe how the supplemental and concentration grant funding relate to the entirety of the district budget. So it's about a three-page document that attempts to show to parents and any other educational partner what that relationship is between this sort of funding and everything else that we do in the district. I want to take a brief moment to say a huge thank you to Director Rhonda Seibert for all her amazingness. Thank you, Rhonda, who just saves my bacon all the time. And this was another example of that, who had, just had these numbers. So we were able to pull easily all of the expenditure numbers that you saw from the first interim report that you saw from Mr. Eichberger in December. So as you can see, our total LCFF funds, which is basically the general fund and our first interim funds were very close, as we also saw in supplemental and concentration grant funds. So very slightly different, but pretty much right on the money. So pretty accurate planning and that is all due to the excellent work in our business office that Mrs. Seibert leads. So here's what we're looking at in terms of both the metrics and the expenditures. There's basically three buckets. And when we look at our metrics, in some cases, some of our metrics we don't yet know because they are in process, we're in the middle of the year. So we don't, we don't have that information, the outcome is in progress, or we know the information. So the LCAP requires of school districts to have a lot of specific metrics that every school district has to report on. And we also have the opportunity to choose some as well. Our LCAP, like all school districts, has a mix of both of those things. So you had a chance to review in the item, all of the metrics there, I'm just going to highlight a few of them for you this evening, but that's what we'll be looking at, that if it's unknown, if it's in progress, or if it's known. The same goes for the expenditures and implementation. In our case, all of our planned expenditures and actions are in the process of being implemented, which is great. We'll have, when we get our actuals at the end of the year, we'll be able to give an even fuller report to say, well, we planned for this action or this group of employees that we pay for through the LCAP to cost this much and actually it ended up being this much depending on who fills those positions and things of that nature. So all of our actions are in progress and so that's good news for the district, that what we said we were gonna do, we are working on doing within this school year. So we have two goals in our LCAP and these should look familiar to the board because they match our district goals. So the first goal is student learning. All Lucie Amar students will meet or exceed learning targets while practicing communication, creativity, critical thinking, and collaboration. So these are just a few highlighted metrics from a much longer list. You can see there that what we have is the baseline that we identified in the first of the three-year LCAP plan. When we write that, we then identify what we hope the outcome will be when we come to the end of those three years. And then that fourth column there is where we are within our mid-year update and then status, whether or not this particular metric, those that I've highlighted here, are final. So we've So we've already shared with the board, cast results. We are on our way back to what we were looking at pre-pandemic. So we're making progress in that direction. Another one that we identify is implementation of standards. And we use a survey instrument to do that. We have fully implemented all of those. And I also highlighted here graduation rate, which we have additionally reported on in our last report in the dashboard. So this is just a few examples of those metrics that we track in the LCAP. There are many others in your document. We could talk about those if you have questions. Here are some examples of the highlighted actions for goal one. So we have class size reduction teachers that are listed there. So there you can see both the budgeted expenditure and then the estimated actuals at first interim. Very close for both class size reduction and intervention teachers, very close planning, very, that's great to see. Avid teachers and associated costs. Since the inception of the LCAP 10 years ago, we've paid for avid from there because it's a wonderful investment in our students. And so the sections of avid that some of our teachers teach are funded from there. And then also the cost to belong to avid and some of the field trips and things of that nature. So this is slightly above and that has to do with those teachers who end up filling those positions. Sometimes they're a little bit more expensive than planned. The refresh budget for student devices, the budget expenditure there is $500,000. The estimated actual you can see is over double that, but that's because we are intentionally carrying over. So when we have a bunch of Chromebooks that come to end of life, then we'll do a big purchase because we can get a better deal. So that's, explains the difference between those two. And student tutoring hours, we said we were going to budget $50,000. We have budgeted $50,000. This is in progress and we will see how those get used by the end of the year. We budget for student tutoring, both in Title I and also in the LCAP. Title I funds are more restrictive, so we spend those first because we always want to make sure that we spend all of that federal money and then we can carry over LCAP more readily. So these are just a few examples of highlighted actions from this portion of the LCAP. The other goal is our second district goal, which is health and wellbeing. Team LuciMR will foster a culture that supports the emotional health, safety and wellbeing of all students. So again, here are some highlighted metrics. You can see the middle school dropout rate there, 0%, target met, that's good news. High school dropout rate is in the neighborhood of our first baseline where we were before. So that's moving in the right direction. The suspension rate is also final because this is looking at last year's data. So that is in the neighborhood of where we want it to be, not too far off. An expulsion rate is also less than 1%, so we have met that target as well. So there are a variety of other metrics there, but this is an example of the metrics that we capture for the second goal in the LCAP. Again, some highlighted actions, one thing that we love to talk about because it's so impactful is the additional counseling that the board invested in, in the LCAP. And so again, very close estimate, approximately $2.1 million. We also fund additional school psychologists from the LCAP. Again, a close estimate, middle school student advocates, a little bit under what we estimated. Again, that's individuals filling positions. Same goes for the next, general ed behavioral specialists, interventionists. Those are slightly more expensive than planned because of the people filling those positions. And then we have additional nursing that is funded through the LCAP at about $714,000. Again, individuals filling positions sometimes cost a little more, less than planned. Luckily, we have a healthy carryover in LCAP, which easily accounts for these small differences. So what's next for the LCAP? Well, we're right in the middle of it. We are crafting our routine surveys at this moment. We will be surveying families, staff and students because we absolutely need feedback from our educational partners in order to craft a plan that works for everyone. We continue our analysis of those actions and consider those that might need revision. Those actions that we highlighted today are just a few of them, but we review everything. We do have an updated template this year, so when you get the draft of the LCAP, you'll see it looking just a little different. The state likes to just change things up, just trying to make it better every year. It is important to note that this is the first of a new three-year cycle. So we'll be setting that baseline metric and we'll be setting that desired outcome in three years from now. And then we'll be adding those metrics as we kind of keep pace over the coming years. So that's an important detail in this particular year. We continue to analyze which metrics we're using and make sure that we're tracking the right data. For example, some of the details that Mr. Finkel just shared with you about their PBIS data and how they're doing referrals up to the office, those sorts of things. We're not currently in the LCAP, but we could consider tracking those sorts of data from various sites as we move forward into this next year. And we'll, I'll be doing a lot of writing and really relying on the team in the curriculum department, the team in the business office to really help bring that alive. We do have routine meetings from our LCAP committee, which is encompasses a parent from every school and our labor partners. We just had one just a few weeks ago and we have more of those coming up soon to continue to gain feedback and we'll be working through that process. As you will know, we'll hear an additional update once the plan is basically created and then the LCAP comes to the board for approval alongside the budget in June. So that is our LCAP plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? I just have one and that is, what is the middle school student advocate?
Middle school student advocate is a person that is working on helping students and families really access services to help them thrive in school. So it's not necessarily someone with a PPS or an LMFT credential, although it's sort of in that neighborhood of work. They're usually working as a companion with a middle school guidance counselor. To say the guidance counselor has the academics and some of the social emotional supports. These are some lower level things that the middle school student advocate can help, you know, maybe access safe services or things of that nature. The students maybe having some attendance issues, struggling with homework, some of those sorts of things that they can support in that way.
Great. Sounds good. And no, no questions from the board? This is a report, a mid-year local, a local control and accountability plan. Does anyone in the audience want to ask a question or have a comment? No? All right. I'm going to bring it back to the board. Any, any comments from the board? Well, I guess you got a new format, just like the FASSFA. Fun, fun.
Indeed.
Okay. Well, hopefully we'll ask for the three-year cycle at least.
That would be wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Martin.
All right. Ms. Lohano, can you note in the minutes that at 7:44, Ms. Trustee Andrea Mignolet departed our meeting? Thank you. Item number 13, report, update on local tax rates, school district comparison. Mr. Eichberger.
Thank you, President Martin. This evening for you, I have a just information item to discuss tax rates as it relates to general obligation bonds. So as we've had some discussion at a few of our facility study sessions and our discussion around measure I, I thought it would be prudent to share some information about LuciMR's tax rate as it compares to other districts. So let's go back, proposition 13, 1978. Yes, that was actually before I was born. I'm going to date myself. And there was this tax rate that was set at 1% of assessed value. And within that rate, they said it was going to be per $1 per $100 of actual assessed value. Fast forward, they said, okay, well, we realize property values are going to go up. However, we want to cap that growth at 2%, meaning the assessed value of a home that's owned can only go up 2% per year, unless that home is sold or it's new construction. So fast forward to proposition 39, where school districts are able to ask for general obligation bonds. So when we think about measure I for the school district, that is a general obligation bond that taxpayers fund facilities improvements for the school. The threshold of that vote is a minimum of 55% voting for that bond. And then there's a community or I'm sorry, a bond oversight committee and some other rules that apply to those bonds. However, the thing that I really wanted to emphasize was the question comes up, how much? How much are we paying? How much do we pay compared to other districts? And what you have in front of you is a chart that is information that is pulled from the county tax assessor's office. And it shows that each of the major or the big five school districts has some bonds, some general obligation bonds that taxpayers have approved. And the interesting part about this is the rates per 100,000 that individuals in those different districts pay. The thing that I wanted to highlight is that in LuciMR, we actually have the lowest general obligation bond rate out of any of the five large districts. So for our district, it's currently hovering around 32.83, $32.83 per 100,000. You go, well, what does that mean? If someone owns a home that has an assessed value of 500,000, and I say an assessed value because what someone could sell a house for is oftentimes very different than what the assessed value is. And the assessed value is something that the tax department tells you, this is how much your, your property is assessed at. And this is how much you will pay in your property taxes. So whatever that rate is, that's where that assessed value for district general obligation bonds is also set at. So for our district, if someone has a home that's worth 500,000 as an assessed value, they would pay $164.15 per year in general obligation bonds to support facilities projects. If we compare to Atascut or Unified, which is paying approximately $118.14, that same $500,000 home, that person would be paying $590.70 in property taxes to support school facilities. So I bring this just as a general, a general information item. As we examine measure I and the great things that have been done, this plays into what our, our current general obligation tax rates are.
Thank you, Mr. Eichberger. This is a report only, but does anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. Eichberger?
No question.
He tells a good story, doesn't he? He tells a good story, so it doesn't necessarily need questions.
So how much per month is that?
Yeah. We've been good to our, and not bad. We've been good to our homeowners, so that's nice. This is a report only, but if anyone from the audience has any comment or question, please come forward. Seeing none, you should be glad if you live in LuciMR's boundaries. And we'll bring it back to the board and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very informative. Okay, we're going to move on to item scheduled for discussion, possible action. Item number 14, approval, selection of design build contract to Edwards Construction Group Incorporated at Roy Grady High School for the auxiliary gymnasium. Project number 0513 under out of bond fund 21.
So as we were just speaking about measure I, this is one of the projects that is, we'll call it currently in the hopper. And the auxiliary gym was something where we put out a request for proposals, an RFP, and we set out a set of desired building requirements. And then we get responsive bids that we then review and score. And I want to thank Executive Director Stenson and his team for not only rating, writing a great RFP, but then making sure that the process and the bid openings is following the appropriate procedures under the design, build, construction, delivery method. And ultimately what this does is it allows a, an architect and a construction company to come together to provide what is considered the best value for the district, meaning a reasonable cost and high quality building that meets the expectations and needs of the district. I'm happy to report that we did go through our process and it should be noted, out of the three responsive proposals, Edwards Construction Group has provided not only the best value in terms of the lowest price in the proposal, but they also meet all of the other requirements under our RFP. It's recommended that the board would move to approve the design build contract for Edwards Construction for the AG High School Auxiliary Gym project.
Does anyone from the board have any questions on item number 14? You know, Mr. Eichberger, we usually see the other bids and we didn't this time. I'm assuming they were higher.
Edwards Construction was the lowest bid.
Okay. And they're local and they've done lots of work for us in the past, correct?
Correct.
Opening this up to the audience, does anyone in the audience like to comment on item number 14? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the board. Does anyone on the board have comments about item number 14? The design build of the new auxiliary gym at Roy Grady High School?
I like this format because you know, right up front with profit is for them, everything's.
The design build concept?
I like that.
I do too, because then if there's a big mistake, they pay what we don't. So that's why I think he has to do a really good job creating those bid specs.
Yeah, remember the design build process is a little bit different than the, the bidding process. And in that, you have architects that part, partner up with a contractor and they put a proposal forward and they actually interview for it within the scope of a price range and project parameters. And in that, Ms. Eichberger, Mr. Stenson spent a day interviewing those various teams, so.
And so the architects, 1906, who we've also worked with many times.
Okay. Any question, any other comments from the board? Okay, I'm going to close it to public, to comment and I'm looking for a motion. We do need a motion on item number 14. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve and award a design build contract to Edwards Construction Group, Inc. at Roy Grady High School for auxiliary gymnasium, project number 0513. It's been moved by, the Santos, second by Ms. Candell. Roll call vote, please.
Santos?
Yes.
Hare? Candell?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
There are just five of us, five zero. Thank you. Motion passes. Item number 15, second reading, initial proposal for collective bargaining from the California School Employees Association and it's LuciMR chapter number 275 to the LuciMR Unified School District for the 2023 through 2026 successive negotiation. Dr. Handy.
Thank you, President Martin. This is the fifth meeting in a row that I've brought the RADA Act to use. So I will save some time and share that this is the initial bargaining position of the California School Employee Association and it's LuciMR chapter 275, presenting to the governing board at the last meeting on January 30th. There were no comments from the public, which is important and part of the two-step process. So this is the second time our public has had the opportunity to speak to it. The memo serves as the second reading in this process and is accompanied by CSEA's initial proposal for collective bargaining, which I reviewed at the last meeting. There is no action required. This is for review only and the district will be sunshining its proposal at the next meeting.
Does anyone on the board have questions for Dr. Handy? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to the audience. Does anyone in the audience have questions for Dr. Handy regarding the initial proposal for CSEA? Seeing none, I'm going to close it from the audience and thank Dr. Handy for bringing this to us. Okay, we're just swimming along now. We're on item number 16. First reading revisions of board policies, administrative regulation, exhibits and bylaws. Dr. Fassa.
Thank you, President Martin. Before you today is the first reading of board policies, an AR, a few, and a few exhibits and a bylaw. And just to preface this, these are all the results of updates to current laws. They've been recommended from CSBA and they've also been vetted or reviewed by the departments. The policies before you tonight are board policy 6143, course of study, board policy 6161.1, selection of evaluation of instructional materials, board policy 6161.11, supplementary materials, supplementary instructional materials, board policy 6163.1, library, media centers, administrative regulation, 6161.1, selection and evaluation of instructional materials, exhibit of the same. Another exhibit, 932-1, closed session. Another exhibit with closed session and then a bylaw with closed session as well, 9321. So there for your review tonight.
Does anyone have questions regarding the administrative regs proposed tonight? Going to close to the board, open it up to public comment. Would anyone from the public like to comment on the proposed new regulations regarding? Would anyone from the public like to comment on the proposed new regulations regarding closed section, evaluation of instructional materials, library, media centers, supplementary instructional materials, selection, evaluation of instructional materials, and courses of study? Seeing no one, I'm going to close it to the audience, bring it back to the board. Any comments by the board on this item? I just had one comment, and it looked like the one it was going to affect the most tomorrow is actually Ms. Lohano because the regulations for how we do closed session as far as our sign-offs and stuff had changed a little bit. So, but it, it will, it's a good cheat sheet for us to practice, so. All right, we do need, it's a first reading, so we'll bring this back at our next meeting for a second reading. There's no motion needed. Item number 17, approval, cast ballot, 2024, CSBA Delegate Assembly, Dr. Fossett.
Thank you, President Martin. Two Representatives, Serb Sub, Subregion 9C, San Luis Obispo, and California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly. Mark Butchman, San Luis Obispo County, serves our representatives, and his current term expires in 2024. Mr. Nelson Yamagata, who's with Templeton USD, serves as the second representative for our area, and his term expires in 2025. So tonight, call for nomination was requested from the upcoming opening by CSBA from our subregion. During the recent call for nominations, one candidate was nominated to serve Subregion 9C for the current opening. Mark Buckman for San Luis Coastal Unified School District. There is also a provision to write, for a writing candidate if the name is desired. CSBA now requests that a member of the district's cast a vote for one delegate and return the ballot postmark no later than March 15th, 2024. The board is asked to consider action to cast its ballots this meeting.
Okay, so, looks like the board is asked to vote on both these guys or just one?
No, just one. Just one.
Just on Mr. Buckman?
Yep.
Yep. All right, do we have to do motion second, or do we just go for a vote?
Well, I, I make the motion that we cast our ballot for Mark Buckman.
A second. Moved by Mayor, second by Santos, to cast the ballot in favor of Mr. Buckman. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor? Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Vote passes 5-0, unneglected, to take public comment on that. Kind of our own thing anyway, so. Sorry. Okay, moving on to item number 18, action, student expulsions. Student discipline case numbers, 2324-024, 2324-025, and 2324-026, and 2324-027. Trustee Candell?
Yes. Need a motion on agreements and stipulations for immediate expulsion with suspended enforcement. One, the Board of Education finds there is cause to expel from all schools in the district, student cases number 23-24-024 for violation of Education Code Section 48900C. Number 23-24-025 for violation of Education Code Sections 48900.7. And number 23-24-027 for violation of Education Code Section 4890082 and 48900R. And two, it is further moved that the board adopts the recitals, agreements, rehabilitation plans, and readmission review dates as set forth in the January 29th, 2024, January 30th, 2024, and February 6th, 2024 agreements, and stipulation for immediate expulsion and suspension of expulsion.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Candell, seconded by Trustee Mayor. Roll call vote, please.
Candell?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Martin?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0.
I want to make the motion on agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion. One, the Board of Trustees finds there is cause to expel student case number 23-24-026 from all schools in the district for violation of Education Code Sections 4890082. And two, it is further moved that the board adopt the recitals, agreements, rehabilitation plan, and readmission review date as set forth in the February 2nd, 2024 agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Candell, seconded by Trustee Mayor. Roll call vote, please.
Candell?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0.
We've come to the part of our agenda for public comments that are items not on the agenda. If anyone would like to come forward and talk to us for up to three minutes, please do so. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and move to adjourn our meeting tonight. We really appreciate you all coming and being here. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March 5th. That's primary election day, so please vote by mail before that, so you can do that and be in our meeting again. All right, we are adjourned with my fancy gavel from 2010.